All right, good evening, everybody. And we will call to order the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting of Belvidere for May 23rd, 2022. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Marerton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. McGee?
Here.
Mahal? Here. Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, under public comment, I did have on the agenda upcoming, it will be an event. It's called the Welcome Spring Festival 2022, to be held on May 28th through the 30th. This is a Latin Latino event. It will be out at Fiesta Market and also RP Lumber. The public is invited. So if the alderman and anybody listening wants to attend, that will be on May 28th through the 30th. Also, I have tonight, we had Officer, or I'm sorry, Sergeant Dave Damon retirement. We had celebration of that and also, I guess, I guess, a roast. Dave, probably not all of it came out then, but it was very, very, very nice. And I wanted to recognize you here before the council and the public for your 26 years of service, beginning on September 5th, 1995. And I believe your last day was May 4th, 2022. I actually recall you coming to work here. I was an alderman here under Rory Peterson was the mayor in 1996, 1995. And I remember when you first came before the council and I saw you, I really, I thought, gee, who's that guy with all that hair? It was, it was amazing. But I certainly, I certainly recall you coming here and taking a position with the city. At the recent Public Safety Building Recognition, I quite frankly was not aware of your many accomplishments. I was, I was very, very impressed. And I think it tells a lot about your career here and about the type of individual that you are. And it's good tonight to have you and your family here, tonight to celebrate those accomplishments and to recognize them. Your list of accomplishment, accomplishments in your career is something to behold. Obviously, you're a classic overachiever and truly a professional in your field. I just wanted to read some of the accomplishments that Sergeant Damon, over his career, has had in his history. He started in patrol. It's my understanding, then you went to Narcotics Division, back to patrol, also Sergeant, and you were in charge of field training. Some of the other notable accomplishments I wanted to read because I, this is what I was really most impressed with and I was unaware of. I know you graduated from Harlem High. You have an associate, you earned Associate's Degree at Rock Valley College, College in Applied Science and Criminal Justice. You also have a Bachelor's Degree from Western Illinois University in Law Enforcement Administration. You have a Master's Degree, hold a Master's Degree. I don't know if that's in education or if that's in law enforcement, but I know you're concluding your doctorate in education. And so that's really, really quite outstanding. And also, your career path was, went quite like this. In March of 94, you were hired by the Loves Park Police Department. In April of 1994, you were hired as a Boone County Corrections Officer. In September of 95, Belvidere Police Department sent, you were hired by the Belvidere Police Department and sent to the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy. And you successfully completed the Basic Police Academy and Field Training Program and was assigned, assigned to patrol. You were also, you've been assigned as a SWAT Team Operator and a S.H.I.E.L.D. Technician. You were on the Gang Intervention Unit, Field Training Officer, Master Firearms Instructor, recognized as a gang expert in court. And you were put in charge of the Explorer Post, which was responsible for teaching young adults 14 to 20 years of age what being a police officer was about. In 1996, you were recognized by the department for your work in apprehension of an armed robber at the Petrol Mart. In 1998, you were recognized by the Department for meritorious service for DUI enforcement. In April 1998, you were recognized by the United States Secret Service Center Department for the arrest of a suspect for possession and manufacturing of counterfeit U.S. currency. In 1998, you were recognized also for the arrest of a suspect for the possession of LSD with the intent to deliver a Class X felony, punishable by six to 30 years in prison. In 2006, you received a Lifeline Ambulance Call of the Year Award for a motor vehicle versus pedestrian accident at Highline and Davis Streets. In 2017, you received a Life Saving Service Award for rescuing three people stranded on a third floor of an apartment building on Jackson Street. You received seven different recognitions by the Rock River Valley Blood Center over several years for coordinating, coordinating the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive, causing over 150 units of blood to be donated. And you received, which I think is quite, quite telling and meaningful, is you received awards for the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motors, for enforcement against drunk drivers in 97, 98, 2012, and 2015. And I believe you were recognized this year as a most recent recipient of that award, too, regarding your DWI, your Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists, and your commitment to that and the public safety of the residents. Obviously, your excellence in teaching and instruction goes without saying. However, as impressed with your accomplishments, Dave's accomplishments, I learned about when I attended Dave's retirement rose slash celebration several weeks ago at the PSB. Unbeknownst to me, I was not only, to me, was not only his incredible list of accomplishments during his 26 years impressive, but one comment above all the rest stood out to me. This that was mentioned about Dave, and it was most compelling of all, was the accolades about Dave and his compassion and caring for victims and for individuals and their families who he encountered in his service at their most difficult times of hardship. He took time to be more than a police officer and be a person who tried to help those in more ways than just enforcing the law. He truly represented the humane side of policing, and that may be his best instruction and his legacy as he leaves his truly remarkable career here in the city of Belvidere. So congratulations to Dave, his wife Jacqueline, his children Jonah, Kane, and William, and thank you for coming here this evening. I'm honored to present you, Dave, a recognition plaque and appreciation on behalf of the city of Belvidere, our residents, this city council, and myself as mayor, for your 26 years of outstanding service in law enforcement to our community. Would you please come up here, Dave? So it reads Sergeant Dave Damon, in appreciation for over 26 years of dedicated service to the city of Belvidere Police Department, dated September 5th through May 4th, 2022. I want to give this to you, Dave, on behalf of the city and extend my congratulations on your retirement to you and my appreciation and the city's appreciation for all the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Okay. Was not expecting everybody to stand up. Thank you. Just very quick, I had a great career here. Love everybody on my shift in the department that I worked with. Chief, thanks for making everything so smooth, the transition out and then being with me all those years. I wouldn't have done it any other way. I'm glad that I got to leave on my own terms while I still have my health and my family to spend more time with. Like I said, I wouldn't have done it any other way. I leave with no regrets, so thank you very much.
Also on the agenda, I know that there were some questions regarding the status of growth dimensions regarding their registration under charitable organization laws. And it had been brought up. I did receive a letter from the Office of the Attorney General of State of Illinois, Kwame Raoul, dated April 26th, 2022, and it's in regards to this, since this had been brought up at, at some earlier discussion, not only here, but I think other places. I wanted to clarify this and I wanted to read what I had received. It's, says, "Growth Dimensions for Belvidere Boone County, 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois, Regarding Status of Growth Dimensions for Belvidere Boone County Under the Illinois Charitable Laws. Charitable Organization Number 01016033." It says, "Dear Registervant, this letter is pursuant to the request that the Attorney General confirm the status of growth dimensions for Belvidere Boone County under the charitable organization laws." And it goes on to say, "This organization is currently registered with the Attorney General's Charitable Trust and Solicitations Bureau as number 01016033. As of April 11th, 2022, the organization was in good standing, having filed its financial report for the period ending December 31st, 2020, and remains in good standing as of April 26th, 2022. Please let me know if there's anything further, any, if you require any further information." So I just wanted to bring that up. I did receive it, and I think that since it was discussed, I did want to follow up with the council on that. Moving on, under Reports of Officers' Boards and Special Committees, Item One, Public Safety, Unfinished Business, We Have None. Public Safety, New Business, Police Department Update. Chief Woody, good evening.
Evening, Mayor. Thank you. So first, I'd just like to start by thanking everybody that was able to make Sergeant Damon's retirement luncheon. It was appreciated by not only him, but his family as well, so thank you for that. Over the last month, items that are of note, the police department responded to a subject with a gun at the Belvidere High School. Our SRO was able to ultimately initiate the initial investigation, make contact with a subject, and the investigation ended up resulting in the apprehension of two juveniles and a item that was reported to have been, the firearm was recovered. So that ended up peacefully and with two people taken into custody. The Fire and Police Commission removed the final two candidates for entry-level testing, causing the police department to have to test again for entry-level candidates starting August 6th. So depending on what type of turnout we get for that, we will be looking at potentially a school in either September or January, depending on whether or not we're able to go through the testing process in August and get those candidates squared away to a point where we can get them in school in September. Currently, we have one position open to replace Sergeant Damon. Then, just to give you an update in terms of personnel with the police department, currently, we're down four officers. We have two that were down due to long-term medicals, one due to deployment in the Army National Guard, and Officer Kozlowski just started K-9 training today and he will be gone for the next 10 weeks. So, and then we were just notified about a week or so ago that we'll be down another officer for approximately six months for another long-term medical. So just to give you an idea of some of the personnel issues we may be presented with here in the next few months. Then, this last Friday, Sergeant Ball and Sergeant Elect Deary graduated from Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command, which is a 10-week school for leadership and management. So they successfully graduated from that, and we went in for their graduation, Deputy Chief Wallace and I. So that would be the extent to my report.
Thank you, Chief. And then also moving on to Item B. Chief, you have Item B, the Renew Software License for XRY.
Yes, if I could have you turn to the memo in your packet titled Authorization to Renew Software License for XRY. Belvidere Police Department's requesting authorization to renew the department's XRY software license. XRY is an investigative tool that allows trained detectives to use the hardware and software to extract and copy forensically secure cellphone data, which can be entered as evidence in a court of law with either consent from the owner or through a judge's order. Belvidere Police Department has used this technology over the last five years, approximately 200 to 500 cases, ranging from murders, sex assaults, robberies, suspicious deaths, narcotics investigations, and this is just to name a few. The software license is a yearly renewal that provides software updates, including the ability to access cellphones new to the market, market over the last year, or any maintenance issues that the end user may encounter due to software or hardware malfunction. The cost of the XRY software renewal is $3,735. I would request a motion to approve the renewal of the XRY software license cost not to exceed $3,735 will be taken out of the contractual line item as listed in your memo.
Okay, could I get a motion of that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. Any discussion regarding that motion? Okay, Alderwoman Frank, yes.
And Chief, how come it's so expensive? Is it just for the detectives, the software? So it goes to, like, how many phones, like four phones?
No, what it is, is the software allows the detective that's trained to use it to essentially download and copy cellphones from witnesses, suspects, victims, that may have information that we need to investigate a case. So for example, if the detective needed something off my phone, they could plug it in, extract the data, and then that data goes into, you know, the computer, and we're able to look at the information that's on that phone. If there's information that's relevant to an investigation, we then can use it to develop probable cause, to make arrests, and continue to investigate that case. Now, that being said, yes, it is the detectives that are trained to use it, but we use it at all levels, whether it be patrol, we've used it for the county, we've used it for other agencies. So it has a wide variety of uses. Why it's so expensive? Because it's necessary. And it's something that is such a quality investigative tool that these companies pretty much know that, you know, once you have it and you experience how useful it can be, I mean, and then they've put a value on what their time and updates are going to cost you.
Continue.
Do we share that cost with the county, then?
No, we do not. They actually have their own cellphone extraction tool because not each software is able to access all phones. So the county actually has another software that has access to certain phones that we may not. So we utilize both software for the city and county. So we both have one, but ultimately, we utilize both.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderwoman Frank. Any other questions? We got in the motion, second on the floor. All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Chief, Item C, Renew Cellhawk Software License, please.
Thank you. If I could have you turn to the memo in your packet titled Authorization to Renew Cellhawk Software License. The Belvidere Police Department's requesting authorization to renew the department's Cellhawk subscription. Cellhawk is a obscure, secure, web-based software that extracts evidence from call detail records and location-based data. The police department, when investigating major cases, regularly receives cellphone tower data that can provide hundreds, if not thousands, of data points in longitude and latitude. That data has to be input into a map in order to determine an area suspect may have traveled. Many cases have multiple suspects, which requires this process to be done multiple times. Cellhawk allows the investigator to digitally input this data, and the program populates the information in seconds. This is probably the most common use of the software, but one of several uses by investigators to document cellphone data. The software license is a two-year renewal that provides software updates, maintenance, and unlimited technical support for three licenses, which means three people can actually use it. I would request a motion to approve a two-year renewal of Cellhawk software license cost not to exceed $3,370 will be taken out of the Belvidere Police Department Operations account.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions regarding the motion before you? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we also have Item D. Chief Woody, the GFL Environmental Service Agreement, please.
Yes, thank you. If you return to the memo in your packet titled the GFL Environmental Service Agreement, Belvidere Police Department's received a 36-month service agreement effective May 1st of 2022 for the disposal and pickup of waste material at the police range on Newburgh Road. This agreement comes with an automatic 12-month renewal unless terminated by the customer or contractor 60 days prior to the expiration of the term agreement. The monthly charges are $54.43 plus a fuel surcharge of $15.70. These charges are consistent with the fees paid since December 2021. I would request a motion to authorize signing of the 36-month GFL Environmental Service Agreement for the continued disposal and pickup of waste material at the police range at a cost of $70.13 per month.
Okay, could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussions regarding the motion before us? Alderman Snow?
How many times do they pick up? Or is it as needed?
I believe it's once a month, but I would have to check to be sure it's not twice.
Alderwoman Frank?
My question is, how much pickup would they have at the police firing range, police range?
We have a dumpster that's positioned outside the range that we put scrap targets or boxes when we finish using ammo. There's actually quite a bit of refuge that is produced from the range. So it's a dumpster's worth.
Any other questions for Chief Woody? Alderman Porter?
I'm assuming this fuel surcharge is just because of the cost of fuel nowadays, right?
This is the first time that we've had to update any contractual agreement. The last one was done through, it was MW. I'm trying to think what the name of the company was. Waste Management, thank you. And so I couldn't tell you if they charged a fuel surcharge or not. This is the first time that I've seen that, and so whether or not that's something that's been consistent, the only thing I could tell you is that the overall price is consistent with what we've been paying. So that, that would lead me to believe that that's something that's been rolled into the, the monthly price.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion before us, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Before we go to Item E in the Fire Department, I want to get back in order here, if you don't mind. I have Eddie Batras here this evening, and I know with the Welcome Spring Festival for 2022, I did want to give him an opportunity to come up and just talk about that, if he would. Good evening, Eddie. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
You have with you your son?
Yeah, yeah. I would introduce Pastor Chris.
Pastor Chris, okay.
He is a member of our Leadership Committee. We are so thankful to be here. Thank you for approving our festival. One of our goals as a community leaders, community, leaders committed to empower communities, obviously, one of our main goals is to keep our community safe. So with that in mind, this festival brings that type of entertainment and commitment from the Latino Business Committee of Boone County. We basically We basically are a program from the Latino Council, which is the five oh one C three program. And the whole idea out of this festival is to have three days of family entertainment. So basically, it's going to be Saturday, this coming Saturday, Sunday and Monday. And it's going to be all kinds of good things going. There will be rides, there will be games, live music. It will be commos, I don't know if, I haven't seen a camel for the last ten years, but that will be excited. Funnies, food booths, public library is going to be present. They're going to bring their book mobile bus. The Fire Department is going to be with us, also the Police Department is going to be with us, other community and state organizations are going to be present. So it's going to be a good time to celebrate. Saturday from four to six P M. And also Sunday from four to six P M is going to be kids' time. We decided to to give time to our kids in our community. So it's going to be games, it's going to be clown, it's going to be a contest and piñatas. So we are trying to, you know, keep our kids happy in that direction. As you may know, some of the main responsibilities that we have as leaders is how can we help with the mental health of our community? In other words, how can we keep them away from worrying? And obviously, we hope that this contributes in a big way. And then on Sunday, which is Memorial Day, in the evening, from four on, we are going to have Christian music. There are some members of the community, we got to respect their beliefs and they want to have their own music and we say, why not? It's Memorial, it's very important date for us and why not celebrate it from that end? So we are taking everybody into account. At the same time, none of us, including me, is getting paid to participate and help and all in this event. We are all volunteers, we are doing from our best heart. And at the same time, we want to have a fundraising, which is coming. Our goal is to to give scholarship for ten students that are or will be going to university. And I will ask Pastor Chris to give us that update. But something important that is happening is we invite many local businesses. Because again, another goal is to help the local businesses. And they provide, it's over fifteen hundred dollars of of prices that we are going to be giving during the contest. And at the same time, we are going to be announcing, giving some advertising. So we are finding ways, how can we help each other and have to make it the best way. So with that, I would like us Pastor Chris to give you a little bit more of the update. How we're going to process, once we get the money for scholarships, and I'm very sorry, but I was short on those flyers, so.
Oh, that's all right.
Yeah.
Well, I'll see you beforehand.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for everything you do for our cities, for our communities. And I really appreciate this town. We were appointed here with my family, well, actually with my wife. Was the only part of my family I had back then when I was appointed here twelve years ago. And our kids were born here in Belvedere. And they're Belvederians and they love their city and they don't want to move anywhere. And even if they appoint me somewhere else as a pastor in the Methodist church, they want to stay here. So I'm going to have to just leave them here and move somewhere else myself. If I get appointed to another city. I just wanted to say that this initiative that we are doing, it's mainly to help our high school kids that are wanting to take their next, their careers to the next step, help them financially and give. Our main plan is to give ten scholarships to ten youth that are wanting to move forward in their careers. We are planning different events that would definitely help our communities, our communities, our Latino community to stay focused into participating and being more involved in in the growth and the well-being of our city. We don't see many Latinos being part of committees that could help our cities develop and for the well-being of our cities. But we want to encourage our Latino citizens to be part of 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 the growth of our of our city. So we are doing, as Brother Eddie here said, mentioned, we are doing this event in, well, pretty much next weekend. And we're going to start a beauty contest for Latino Queen Contest of Boone County. We are going to elect the first, the first elected lady will be our queen and it's going to be two princesses who will be elected during our first gala dinner night of our organization, which is the Latino Council. Also, at the gala night, we will have a special, a special recognition to those friends from Boone County and the city's governments and other leaders who support and recognize the presence and value of our community here in the, in the Boone County. We will be celebrating the election of our Celebration Gala Dinner Night on September seventeen of this year. At the same time, in that day, we will be presenting the scholarships for the, for our university or college, college students. Also, we will initiate during the festival, during this festival, our campaign, "To Voto Es Tu Voz", which means your vote is your voice. As you all, as you all know, elections are coming soon in November and we will be helping to register and raise our qualified citizens. If they are not registered yet and promoting the importance for those who already registered to vote. Because our voice is our vote. Nuestra voz es nuestro voto. And we will have other community and civil events. Our goal is, as as members of our Latino Business Committees of Boone County, is to empower, to encourage our communities in education, family and community values. As well as our, and our civil rights and obligations and responsibilities. Thank you all for everything you do, once again. And I would like to see you all in our upcoming events. Bienvenida la Primavera, two thousand twenty-two, Welcome Spring, two thousand twenty-two. I hope to see you all there. Have a blessed one.
Thank you.
And last, and last, I know the, the, the officer, the sergeant that retired. Congratulations, even though he's not here, I have two of my kids there on law enforcement. I am part of this wonderful, wonderful family. And I tell you pretty quick, I'm sorry if I'm taking one extra second. But before my kids went into, they went to school and then when they went into the the law enforcement, I didn't know what they do besides giving tickets. I didn't know. And when they come and they tell me when they save lives and they help kids. They help persons that want to jump a bridge, you know? It's just, it just amazes me, so salud, saludo, you know, we salute and they do, the chief department, I mean, we're a community. If we put our values on the table, what we and every one of us bring to the table, it is just amazing. All of you, your time, your passion, that really is what pushes us to be behind you, trying to make this city and this county the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming here this evening and you're right, we're all in this together. And I certainly appreciate you coming, coming down here. And again, that event, Welcome Spring Festival, two thousand twenty-two, will be May twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. And it will be out at the Fiesta Market and the RP Lumber Parking Lot off of Chrysler Drive. So I appreciate it, thanks for coming. All right, we'll move to item E, our Fire Department update. Chief Shadle, good evening.
Good evening, Your Honor, thank you. The first thing I wanted to update council on, and Your Honor, is the last month's calls. So since we last reported twenty-eight days ago, the skilled and dedicated members of the Fire Department responded to two hundred and fifty-seven calls for service, averaging nine point one seven calls per day. So happy to report that there were no structure fires in the past twenty-eight days. And only one vehicle fire. We did, however, respond to twelve motor vehicle incidents. And the Belvedere Fire Paramedics responded to one hundred and seventy-seven EMS calls. Among the EMS calls, we provided medical care for thirteen people having chest pain. We helped provide care for patients, two patients having seizures, three strokes, one overdose, two obvious deaths, eleven traumas and one allergic reaction. The Fire Department also responded to six hazardous conditions. Two of those were flammable gas incidents, one flammable liquid spill, three natural gas leaks and one carbon monoxide incident. We assisted with thirty service calls, including sixteen public service incidents. Those tagged that way are usually for helping assist a disabled or elderly person either up or they just call for various reasons. And and or installing smoke detectors. And then we also responded to ten unauthorized burns. So continuing on to last month's training update, as you guys well know, at the Fire Department, we train every shift. And for the last month, we practiced rapid deployment of our Master Stream deck gun and our pre-connected hose lines. We also set up and flowed our aerial device, our big ladder truck with the large aerial Master Stream. For hazmat training, we went over Emergency Management Agency asset called the hazmat ID. That is something that can help us identify an unknown solid. So that's an asset for the county. So for EMS training this month, we covered responding to incidents involving child abuse. And each month, we also study a line of duty death for lessons learned. And this month, we discussed Lieutenant Ramos, who passed in a Rock, Rock Falls, Illinois, in a house fire due to a floor collapse. So as far as outside training, Lieutenant Cunningham and Lieutenant Drawl attended hazardous materials incident command. It's a state certification class. And Joe Herber and firefighter Winnie attended rope operations. That's also a state certification class that they went to and obtained that certification. I would like to take a second to thank Crusader Clinic. They allowed us to use the old Northern Lights Building for an acquired structure training and it was very helpful. We had it shorter than planned, it took them only about, we had about a week and a half. We thought we were going to have about thirty days to train in there, but you know, we made good use of that as best we could. So I would like to thank them, it was a great opportunity. So I'd like to report on our station repairs that you guys have approved. And so the painting at Station One is about three quarters of the way done. The replacement air conditioner has started and the new training room door is almost finished up. So I thought I'd also take a second and give you guys a quick pension update. As you all know, there has been a consolidated pension fund, who is now the investment managers for the pension fund. And the Fire Department has transferred all of their assets to the downstate pension fund successively. They've all been transferred and reconciled to make sure they got everything and everything was accounted for. And our monthly statements lag a little bit, but the last one I had was from March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And the net position at that time held in trust for pension benefits was twenty million, three hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seven cents. That concludes my Fire Department report, I would take any questions.
Any questions for Chief Shadle? No? Chief, this is your first official, formal meeting, I believe, that you've been at. I mean, I know you've been to others as well, but certainly thank you for all that you do and appreciate looking forward to working with you. And I know the council does as well, so. Item F, we have the new Fire New Engine procurement update. So I, I know that you had put a letter, a memo out and or actually, I guess it's authored by Lieutenant Swanson. And I had, I had actually made a miscue regarding the individuals that were composed of the committee regarding this. I know in the past, your predecessor, Chief Heiser, we had talked about, you know, having Alderman serve. I thought that was a good idea, Alderman Stevens and Alderman Snow. So Alderman Snow wasn't able to make on short notice the meeting, he certainly didn't have time. But moving forward, Alderman Snow and Alderman Stevens will both be on the, on the procurement, engine procurement. So I'm sure you wanted to talk about that, Chief?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. And thank you, Alderman Stevens and Snow, for volunteering your time and efforts to help us with this election. I know you guys will be a big help, so I appreciate it. So in your guys' packet, you're going to find a, bless you, a letter from Lieutenant Swanson. So Lieutenant Swanson is in charge of the apparatus for the Fire Department. He's leading the truck committee, as the mayor had said, to replace our twenty-year-old engine one oh two. It's a frontline pumper, it has the equivalent of one million miles on it based on engine hours. So Alderman Stevens, being part of the engine committee, who met at length today, I thought I would yield to you so you could give an update.
Well, yes, we ended up talking to a gentleman from McQueen Fire. And he had brought in some stuff for Pierce Fire Engines. Now, I think it is we have four hundred and eighty thousand dollars budgeted for this. And with all the supply chain and everything, that ain't going to touch it anymore. Because I mean, we're probably looking at over six hundred thousand now. The one good thing coming up with Pierce Fire is they have what they call stock trucks. Every so many trucks, they'll put one on the line just for them. Now, if you order a fire truck through them, you're looking at twenty-five months to get it built. Now, with a stock truck, they actually have them coming up in October and another one probably in eighteen months. These are trucks that they build, you know, to their specifications. The current stock trucks are still in what they call engineering. So if there's any changes to be made to it, we can still do it with no problems. And we talked to them today about ways to conserve money on some certain things that, you know, that don't affect the operation of the truck, it's mostly looks and stuff. If we have any major changes, we'd have, if we decide on this truck, we're going to have more trucks coming in to get more prices. And I'd like to have them hopefully for the meeting in the sixth, to let everyone kind of know what else is going on. The thing about Pierce is Rockford Fire goes with them, Freeport Fire goes with them. Rockford has a garage that is very familiar with them. McQueen has a service tech that lives down in Paw Paw and he has a, his own truck. He's a serviceman that'll come to our station and take care of things. The nice thing about Pierce, Pierce builds everything of the truck. A lot of the other manufacturers, I don't want to say, go out to different manufacturers for their frames, their cabs, and they just basically assemble them. So, if you have a problem with something, sometimes you're ending up with the, well, that's them over there. You got to talk to them. Pierce and a couple of the other ones we're going to be coming to, they do everything. So, we don't have some of the problems. Hopefully, they'll be around for a long time, unlike our Seagraves. You know, Seagraves, they've been in business since the early 1900s, maybe late 1800s. Who would have expected them to go out of business, but they did. And we're having trouble with that engine. And I hate to say, our engine we want to replace is a ticking time bomb. What else? This would be manufactured in Florida. There are other factories in Appleton. If you go with Pierce, money is not due till it's ready to deliver. With this being a stock truck, this one is available across the United States for anyone else to buy. That's about all I have. Has anybody got any questions about this, or...? Yes?
I think before we talked in regards to this procedures, I think some of the problems was, once you find a truck, and by the time it comes to the committee and then goes through all the processes, it takes some time, and then that truck may be gone. Were we talking about, as you presented these, to kind of have a no higher-than limit so that we can kind of secure that, and then kind of brief the council afterwards, or what's kind of the plan going forward so that these trucks that are being kind of taken quickly, we can still get them at a reasonable price but not miss out on an opportunity?
That's what's going to be happening. They'll be coming, we talked to the salesman today with what's some of the things we needed to add on to it. They'll be coming back with a price by the sixth meeting. Thankfully, you know, we have that next meeting Monday where we're not meeting at all. And by then, we'll also have a couple other manufacturers that can tell us, you know, if they also do what they call stock trucks and stuff so that we can get a good idea of how much more we're going to end up paying since everything's gone to hell.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderwoman Frank?
With Pierce, would we still be able to do the yearly payments like we always do?
Yes. We discussed that. What they do is, they can, their financing is through PNC. But if they said we want, you know, we can go talk to our lenders and find out if there's anything. Or I'm sure Shannon and the mayor can come up with, you know, places that, you know, loan for municipalities, and, you know, hopefully get a good, you know, because he talked about the buy-to-lease. That's basically financing, the same thing. You make so many payments. He's going to come up with payments on a seven-year, 10-year, and 12-year on this so we'll know kind of what we're going through.
Okay. Any other questions for Alderman Stevens?
Your Honor, I wanted to add just a little bit.
Yeah, Chief.
Alderman Stevens. So, one thing that, the benefit of a stock truck and the reason why we're looking at stock trucks in the past, all of our engines have been built based on our preferences. And we have taken time and done before engineering and designed these apparatus. So, one thing that we decided, or the Truck Committee has decided to save money, especially with these huge costs, is to not get a custom truck. So, on average, these custom trucks, which we have done in the past and which we actually purchased in the past, the Lexus was a custom truck, and that we budgeted for, that normally would have provided for us a truck that we order. It would have been built to our specs and then completed usually in about a year from when you order it. So, what the committee has done, partially due to the direction they were given, was to look at these stock engines. So, these stock engines are engines that the manufacturers build every so often to keep these lines moving with available parts, so to keep their workers busy. So, the fact that it is a stock truck is an effort to save money and then save time. So, I just wanted to add that. And then the financing, we talked about the different financing today, and Alderman Stevens is exactly right. He said that the lease to own was just financing. He said current rates on these loans are on a seven, about 3.9, and on a 12 on the higher side, about a 4.19% interest rate. And he says that the interest rate environment is climbing. So, we hope to have some actual numbers for you all, for all your consideration on the sixth or the next meeting after that, because we're really unsure until we get those exact numbers. But everything is coming in, in the high sixes for the stock trucks. And the custom trucks are obviously much more than that. So, that's something that we're not even considering. But if you have any questions for either of us, any further questions, be happy to help you.
Alderwoman Frank?
Do we use the mini pumper much? Because could that be like a trade-in or something?
So, that is a great question. Unfortunately, the mini pumper isn't an engine. So, if I were to describe the functionality of the mini pumper to you, I would say imagine our engine with a single pre-connect line. So, if you had Engine 102 right now, so both of our engines, what they have is they have three lines that are pre-connected. We have two inch and three quarters and a two and a half. These lines flow 200 to 250 gallons of water. You can pull multiple lines off. They're pre-connected at 200 feet. If you have, say, on Lincoln, where you have a larger setback, where the houses are more than 200 feet, you can't park a fire apparatus in the grass, unfortunately. It would sink and probably get stuck. So, on the back of fire engines, we have additional hose loads. We have a hose load hooked to a three-inch supply line for quick deployment that we could take this on the pack and then take wherever we need, and then deploy that, and then use that with either one or two pre-connected inch and three-quarter lines to suppress fire. An engine can also draft, say, we get called to District Two where there's no hydrants, and we're the second engine in, we might be like the fire that the last fire they had in the county. We were a supply pumper. So, we were in between the, a fire hydrant or water source and the fire engine that was actually doing the pumping. And so, that, we were a relay pumper at that time. So, the mini pumper doesn't have any of that. It only has what the equivalent of one inch and three-quarter attack line. The benefit of the mini pumper is that can suppress quite a bit of fire. But the limitations are, it has to be within 200 feet, and it's only in one location. Say we're fighting, going against a balloon frame, and the fire was anywhere in a balloon frame, it's going to go up to the attic. That would be a two-line attack fire, because we'd have to attack the fire, and then we'd have to bring a line right away to the roof, or one that started outside and is inside. That's a two-line fire. So, the mini pumper, in many situations, it's fast, and it can knock out a ton of fire. But it can't replace everything that an engine does. In our community, being a two-engine response community, it would probably not be in our best interest to take one of those engines off the road and replace it with the mini pumper. So, right now, the only time that we use the mini pumper is when we have eight people on duty. So, our normal daily staffing is seven. So, when we have eight on duty, we split the Station Two crew into two on the engine, and then two on the mini pumper. And then those guys are, so we still have two engines, and the mini pumper as a support vehicle. It's a great support vehicle. Based on our need for an engine, there is always the question like, okay, if money is so tight, and these things are so very expensive, could we sell that? And it would be tough if you sold it. One, I don't think you would get what it's worth. And then if, when we get to that size again, or when we have eight people and we want to add that support, and which it's a great asset, like if we could, many structure fires could be handled by that. But with it being a support vehicle, if we sold it, it would be very difficult to get again. And then when we go to buy it again, or something like it, it would be 40 to 50% more. So, that is the whole story on the mini pumper.
Okay, I have one, I have one more question, if you don't mind. So, does the mini pumper, does it have the pressure capability of like, say, an engine, like 101?
So, the mini pumper, what it has is ultra-high pressure system, and that's, it works so well, and it's a 20-gallon-per-minute flow. So, within that 20 GPMs, it's ultra-high pressure, it's able to suppress almost as much fire, and I would argue as much fire as one pre-connect off the fire engine. So, in, when we were looking at that, when we went up to Wisconsin and did a demo of that, they started a large fire inside of a barn, and they used mattresses and furniture, stuff made of synthetic materials like in today's homes so that the fire would have a high heat release rate. And then they waited until that barn flashed over, and the barn, the actual timbers, and everything was actually on fire. That 20 GPM line suppressed that fire. Now, that fire was in a known location in a known spot, and we were able to attack the seat of the fire. So, it can suppress quite a bit of fire. It just, it has limitations.
Could you just tell me again about the capability of water storage? I didn't get that.
Okay. So, it flows 20 gallons per minute. It has a line, it has a line on each side. I forget the exact pressure, but I want to say 1600 or 1700 PSI. So, that's the reason it's able to suppress, because it breaks up the water droplets to such a fine surface area. And the surface area of the water droplets is actually what absorbs the heat and puts out the fire. So, a regular engine, those maximum flow pressure is 150 PSI. So, a normal engine, this tank, we have either 500 or 600 gallon tanks, or our ladder truck has a 300 gallon tank, a little smaller. Our mini pumper has either, it's a 200 gallon tank. And so, but it doesn't have any relay capability, but it does have supply line that we could, I know it's getting technical here, but we could do that. But, so that's the answer to your question, is that a standard pre-connect on a fire engine, pumped at 150 PSI, will almost flow 200 gallons a minute. And then the mini pumper, which is around 1600 PSI, will flow 20 gallons a minute. But it's, they're very different. They're very different.
Thank you. You did answer my questions.
These newer fire trucks are going to be able to pump 1500 gallons a minute. They're going to be able to pump 1500 gallons a minute. So, many more lines off of it. One thing I did learn from discussing things, the insurance service organization comes in and does the review. They give us so many points for different things. And then they provide the Fire Department with a insurance rating number. I mean, most houses, it doesn't, you know about that. Most houses, it doesn't make a difference. Mostly the factories, the mini pumper gets no points. It's like an ambulance. Whereas this new fire truck, I don't know the exact numbers, but it will count for that. So...
Okay. Alderwoman Frank, there?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment too. When I had taken a tour of the Fire Department, I believe, when it was explained to me, doesn't the mini pumper have different capability as far as like foam and putting out different sorts of fires? It's like the way that the water is, there's multiple functions on the mini pumper.
The quick answer is, no. I mean, the main difference with the mini pumper is that it's able to, you can use, it has a 20-minute water supply. It's like, so a fire truck, 500 gallons, 200 gallons a minute, you're done in two and a half minutes. This has the same suppression, the ability to absorb as much heat as one inch and three-quarter line. You have 20 minutes of, 10 minutes of water with this, not 20, it's 10 minutes of water. And then you can feed it with an engine. So, that's the main, I mean, there is, I would have to double-check, but there is foam. I believe you can add foam to that. But the main difference is because of the ultra-high pressure and changing the droplet size of the water. Clayton can attest to this. If you've ever fought a fire, when you go into the basement of a house fire, what does the basement look like? A pool. A pool, because most of the water used to attack a fire is not from absorbing heat. It drips down and it causes water damage. So, and I forget the road, but we had a fire on the upstairs floor of a house. We went in and made a quick knock-on of it. The fire is not what caused the majority of property damage to that house. It was the excess water, because all the drywall broke and right over the living room and things like that. So, one of the other benefits is that most, all of the water used is used to absorb heat. So, there's not a lot of water damage. So, it's fast and it limits water damage. But it is a great support vehicle. So, it is, I'm not saying that it can't do a lot, because it is a great support vehicle, but it is not an engine.
And you reminded me foam. The truck we're looking at probably will not have foam on it, because there's a Class A foam, which is for your normal combustibles, wood, paper, stuff like that. It soaks, it makes the water wetter and soaks in more. Problem with it is it's highly corrosive. So, we've had troubles in the past, and if you don't use it enough, it gums up badly. There's also A triple F, which was aqueous film-forming foam, which is for flammable liquids. But unfortunately with that, as we've been discussing, PFAS, PFOM, it's got that in it. But nice thing is, is that they have inductors that you can put in line, and that's kind of what we're using now. Those, you put them in a bucket, rinse them out. Whereas we have one of the older fire trucks that had it, and then about, I don't remember how old it was, the fittings rotted out, and we dumped foam everywhere, because it's so corrosive, and it also plugs badly, so...
Any other questions for Clayton, Alderman Stevens, or Chief Shadle? I just wanted to make a comment. Before, you know, we are looking at this engine, I was a little bit dismayed when I came into office, and I realized that, and I had not telling the council anything that I haven't said publicly or that we haven't discussed, Chief, about being a little bit dismayed about making a purchase that, quite frankly, for $220,000 or whatever it was, $230, that we had made that purchase, and then with the realization that, you know, we had, I had seen service records dating back to 2018 that indicated that we had a issue with a pumper or an engine that had probably seen its better days, and its life expectancy was certainly in question. I guess my question would be, Chief, so as a backup vehicle, you know, is this vehicle going to be on as a responder on fires? And then the new engine would go if needed, or would this follow a new engine out? And I would assume that would be the case, because you never know what you have. However, I'm just trying to figure out how we would best utilize the mini pumper with the investment. I mean, it sounds like it's a vehicle that perhaps if we had a new engine, that may not be utilized as much as we think. But it's just a question. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Sure, Mayor. Absolutely. Right now, if we purchased a new engine, that engine would replace the Engine 102, and it would still be used frontline. So, daily staffing, our average, our minimum staffing is seven. Our usual staffing is seven. So, engine, or Fire Department engine companies are like crews. So engine or fire department engine companies are like crews. So we operate with the two crews. And so the new engine would be used as a frontline engine and then 142 is what the mini pumper, what we've been calling that, would still be used as a support vehicle. And engine companies, they work together as units and NFPA standards, which is like the prudent man of the fire service, they say they should have four people. And three is the industry standard, but to split it up even further is difficult and unproductive because we're asking these guys to do tasks that they need to be paired up. OSHA requires two in, two out, that requires two people. If you've got a pump operator and you only got two guys on a vehicle, that person can't go inside, be against the law to go inside in a, in a house fire where there's an IDLH atmosphere. So honestly, it would still just be a support vehicle if, I mean, the guys are really busy every day. If we get to the, you know, I know Chief Heiser had gone over the number of times that we have three calls within an hour and things like that where that extra crew would be nice. And if we get up to the eight-man, if we have eight on duty, then we do split and do two and two at Station Two. I, I mean, that's something that we could look at, but I think off the top of my head that that's something that it would be difficult to work in, to use the mini and not have an engine, not have those two engines online each day. The other thing that for consideration is that we all provide auto aid to everybody. So anytime there's a fire in Cherry Valley, we send an engine out of town and often nobody comes in for a recall. That's just a matter of fact. That's just how it is today. And so we have, if, you know, how do you only have one engine and then you send an engine out of town or you send that out of town to keep the one engine? So those are all safety considerations that you're factoring in. Like today, we had a fire in the county when we were meeting. And so we sent 150 to District Three. Luckily, it was something that went out right away. But then again, you're down to that one response vehicle. So if you're, if one of them is that, that mini, it'd be really difficult for us in, with the seven-man staffing, to be able to utilize that. It, in the past, we've had 140, our rescue truck, and we've, that's what we've used for that. It was an ambulance that the, if you've been on the council for a little while, at any time we had extra staffing, that we manned that to keep the bigger trucks off the road. And so 142 basically replaced 140 with the additional ability to suppress fire, which 140 did not. And then when we have the staffing, we'd have three suppression vehicles instead of two. So to answer your question, I don't see a way off the top of my head to make that the frontline when we have seven on duty, which is the fact, the case most of the time.
And, you know, with that being said, my first observation would be, and I'm, would be, for years, we had, we had obviously been able to get along without a mini pumper. And I had went to the, out to Belmar whenever the display was done regarding the effectiveness with it. I actually, you know, was, it was my belief that it would save on using the big engine responding for every call and that maybe I was wrong, but I had thought that, you know, that it was being looked at as potentially a savings for the taxpayer without running our largest apparatus through town. And, but when I, now in hindsight, when I, when I think about it, you know, unfortunately, this is all about being able to afford, as you and Alderman Stevens had both mentioned, and I think the council, everybody's well aware of the fact that you have price increases for not only food and fuel and what have you, but also for the apparatus that we're discussing tonight. And it's all about how we're, how we're able to afford, you know, to pay for that. And, you know, that's a huge expense. So when I, when I think about the small, the mini pumper, 142, when I think about that, it really, I was dismayed by the fact that we had spent, and I've said this before, we had spent $220,000 or $30,000. And I know this, I know this is, you're new and this isn't, I'm not throwing darts at you or anything like that. I'm just stating that, you know, I think probably that money, if it wasn't going to go towards having a first-line vehicle, that it would have probably been better used, and I've said that before, better used on an apparatus, piece of apparatus that we truly were going to use as a first responder and as a back, and as a, for mutual aid vehicle and what have you. So, you know, it's all about, I do want to talk, I do think after we get a price on it, we need to set with Shannon and we need to figure out a way, how, the best way as we move forward to be able to afford this. And also, you know, we'll have to sit down and make a decision as to what we do with 142. Believe me, I understand that it would be great to have another piece of equipment, but if we're running a new truck and then we're also running the mini pumper out and we're not, you know, we're not looking at putting fires out with the mini pumper as a primary, then I guess in this day and age, what we can afford and what we need as opposed to what we want and what we don't need, we may have to reevaluate that. You know, that's just, we're looking at a huge expense, but it's even made bigger, larger by the economy that we're in, find ourselves in now. No fault to you, Chief, no fault to anybody else, but that is the reality. So I'd like to see, you know, the price and obviously you have a time element. I think you said October. Alderman Stevens said October for a stock truck. And then after that, it looked like maybe 18 months. So after we get the committee buttons down all the figures, including the price, then we'll, we'll certainly go from there. But I appreciate all your hard work and I realize this is what we have and we're going to have to make the best of it, so. Any other questions for Chief Shadle regarding that? Okay, moving on. Item G, Chief.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item G is a vacation time carryover request. One thing, just so the council knows, we define vacation time as a number of things and one thing that it includes is holidays. So I just wanted to clarify that right at the beginning, that probationary firefighters don't actually have any vacation time, but they earn time off as they pass a holiday in lieu of pay. So if someone works Christmas, they don't get paid extra. But how it works contractually through the CBA is that anybody who's employed that passes a holiday then receives 24 hours off. So these are the holiday days defined as vacation time that we're talking about. We have two probationary firefighters that over their course of their probationary year, they earned this time off. And then the way our calendar works for the vacation selection period, which begins in March, the calendar fills up. There's two slots. And then once those two slots are full, if a third person has their name down, it causes overtime. So we don't allow it except for when it's contractually required to cause overtime. So these guys were unable to use these time, these days, as they earned them. So as they earned them, they weren't able to put them down. So we have one in your packet, you'll see. I would, the motion would read Troy Vandenberg would carry over six days of vacation time and Zach Bullard would carry over five days of vacation time for them to use in this upcoming fiscal year according to our vacation distribution process.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Preether. Any discussion regarding the motion in front of us? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. All right. Thank you, Chief. We have item three, finance and personnel on finished business. We have none. Finance and personnel, new business. Item A in your packets or on your desk, I guess, there was a finance department memo from Ms. Hanson. Ms. Hanson, I ask you to comment on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor Morris. I'd like to take a moment to provide an update on the audit process for fiscal year '22. City auditors were onsite May 11th and 12th, conducting preliminary fieldwork and will return for two weeks in June. In the meantime, we continue to provide them with a variety of information and reports. As the mayor mentioned, as part of the annual audit, the city prepares narratives describing the processes and procedures for certain functions, such as cash receipts, accounts payable, payroll and utility billing. These narratives outline a number of checks and balances that are in place to ensure accurate information and to minimize the chance of fraud or misappropriation. You have in front of you tonight copies of the narratives prepared as part of this year's audit. Some narratives submitted the previous year were outdated. Processes and procedures were verified with each corresponding department and all narratives have been revised showing current practices. Also, at the time of the FY '21 audit was presented, a number of recommendations were made by Sickich to improve certain processes, all of which have been part of the audit report for at least the last three years. At that time, we committed to reviewing each recommendation and implementing what changes were possible. While some will continue to exist simply due to the small number of personnel employed in a particular department or the manpower required to move forward with a recommendation, the city has revised practices, clarified procedures and looks forward to the removal of some of the FY '22, or some of them in the FY '22 audit report. We have also initiated new processes, which do not appear as part of the narratives as they begin with the current fiscal year. And then just one last thing. If you, I'd ask if you could bring your budget books to next week's meeting. I will then take them, update any pages that changed since the last go-around prior to the budget approval and then bring them back to the following EK and you will have current final draft budgets in your books that you can use throughout the fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon. Any questions for Ms. Hanson? Okay, I appreciate you bringing our procedures and processes up to date with what's best regarding our accounting. And I know you put a lot of hard work into it and, you know, you had it learn as you go and I'm very grateful, so thank you for that. Item five, under other, I have an appointment of Paul Engelmann as Chair of the Planning Zoning Commission. So I would recommend a motion to consent to the appointment of Paul Engelmann as Chairman of the Planning Zoning Commission. Could I get that as a motion? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman, Alderwoman Mohal. Mr. Engelmann has been on the Planning Zoning Commission for a number of years. He has been currently acting as Chair and he has been in the past. I've known Mr. Engelmann since 1995, I think, and certainly appreciate his time and interest in the city and helping us with this. So if there are no questions about Mr. Engelmann's appointment, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And we have appointment of Brenda Abelad to the IDA, to the IDA Public Library Board. And you have in your packets an application. I did speak with, well, I did speak with both Mr. Engelmann to make sure, going back a step with Mr. Engelmann to make sure that he was actually interested in being the chairman and wasn't railroad by absence, his absence into taking it. So he did confirm with me that he would stay on his chair. So as far as the appointment of Brenda, you have in your packet her application with some history. I would entertain a motion to appoint Brenda Abelad to the IDA Public Library Board. Could I get that in motion? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions regarding that? Any comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passed. As well, then we have a St. James Church parade request. And you can see in your packet their request, it looks like, you know, they are going to have 50, 250 along a parade route. The proposed route is going to be from the church on Church Street to Main Street. Looks like the Julian east of Warren, south to, in, south Church Street and then back to, back to St. James Church. So I assume you've all had a chance to look at this. So could I get a motion for approval, please? Motion by Alderwoman Mohal, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion, any questions regarding that motion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. That's all we have on the agenda. Could I please have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman McGee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. For the record, we adjourned at 7:26 PM. Thank you, everybody.